Ladies and gentlemen, please rise for the place at six o'clock. It is Monday, October 2nd. Ladies and gentlemen, please rise for the place at six o'clock. It is Monday, October 2nd.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We should all note, our colleague, Tim Lane's father, Tim Lane, the board, passed away recently. So, our respects go to the Lane family.
And I want to thank all of the members of the board for their condolences. And also my mom and aunt, it was very kind of everybody, really much. She really appreciated it, the whole family did, thank you very much.
Sorry for your loss. I know what it's like.
You're welcome.
Tonight, we have two continued public hearings. First is the Daughters of Charity continuing for their site plan approval. We'll open the public hearing at 6:01. Andy, take it away.
Hi, good evening. Andy Greif from Greif Law Firm on behalf of the Daughters of Charity. Not much new to report this evening. We did receive a comment letter from Lobella. Dan Hirschberg and his team are actively working on addressing it. Our anticipated timeframe to get back to them would be by the 9th, a week from tonight. And we think we'll then be in a position for you to ask you to consider final site plan approval, action meeting on 16th. But I'm here just to update you, we are actively working on it, working well with Lobella. And also if there are any public questions, any questions the board has, I'd be happy to do that.
Matt, were there any questions on that, or do you think are unable to be resolved by that particular statement?
Well, that's up to them to think and respond back.
Okay.
Thank you. Obviously, if you guys have questions, reach out to us.
Okay, sure. Yeah, anytime. Yep. Thank you.
So, the 9th is when you'll give back your letter to Lobella?
Yeah, and Dan seems anticipating a response back to Lobella on the 9th. Hopefully, that puts us in a position for you to consider action on the 16th.
Okay, so pending satisfactory answers to everything that's in that letter.
If we get it on the 9th, the decision by the 16th might be a bit early. So, but let's see what comes in and what could be improved with conditions. But we have to have at least a certain number of weeks, and we'll talk about this with the board afterwards, about, you know, terms of corporate, so we can't immediately just put everything down and turn around and respond. It'll take a couple of days. So, if we get it denied, the next board meeting's the 16th, I can't commit to anything. But we'll certainly do what we can. I appreciate that. The amount of items are dwindling. And as long as everything's been satisfactory handled, you know, we'll circle back.
Okay.
And take care of that.
Does anyone on the board have anything further on the Daughters of Charity? Since it's a public hearing, does anyone from the public have anything about the Daughters of Charity? Daughters of Charity?
I support, as I said, for social, welfare, moral, as well as other kinds of reasons. So, I would urge you to approve of this project that these people need. Thank you. You're welcome.
So, place of public hearing, 6:04. Next is a continued public hearing regarding 5056 Clifford. Thank you, Andy. 5056 Clifford Road. Do you want to update us as where we are, Matt?
So, we received a response back from the applicant, and we've committed to pay the review and providing a written response by October 13th. So, we're assuming a three to four week turnaround on those. I can't speak with the specifics. I was hoping Lauren was going to be on, but I can't see. She is...
Lauren, are you on?
Okay. I mean, there's nothing significantly, you know, of an issue, other than the stormwater. And in the first letter, you know, we laid out that, one, he's not required to prepare a swit because it's not over an acre of disturbance, but he still has to demonstrate that the stormwater will be properly handled on site through his raining and drainage plant. So, I haven't seen the details of what he provided, so I'm going to leave that up to Lauren to determine if it's going to be satisfactory to deal with the increased runoff. And taking into consideration the existing runoff under the property house. So, as we know, the concern with the bank mess. And he's been, there's been coordination with Mike in terms of engineering, the water and the sewers. That's all being handled. We haven't seen any significant concerns at this point.
Okay, so October 13th is the next milestone date.
To have the letter out to Dominic.
Okay. So, they have, likely it's not going to be the 16th.
No. No, because I would imagine there'll probably be a couple more items he's got to pull together. But again, we can get smaller.
Okay.
And then we can discuss what can be conditioned for approval.
Okay. Does anyone from the board have any further comments on 5056 Clifford? The public have any comments? Bill, you had put some comments in writing. That'll be included in the record for the public hearing. Do you want to say any, summarize any of them?
I just want to remind the board of the opposition to the neighbors that were in attendance at the first public hearing back in, I believe it was the beginning of August. It's in the letter, I can't remember the date. Remember those comments? I heard nothing in support of the project. And my other question was, members of the board haven't really discussed anything other than asking where the dumpster's going to be located and what part of that picture shows the front versus the back of the plot. It'd be nice to hear your actual support or non-support for the project moving forward, adding four more apartments in that part of the neighborhood. Any discussion at all would be great. It's adding four, there's two there.
Did you forward that letter? Did you forward that letter to me? That was a suspect.
Yeah, I'll have that, I thought I did, but I was making sure.
You may have it.
I'll make sure you have it.
You will, Don?
Yeah, okay, here it is.
Anyone further for 5056 Clifford? Then we'll close the public hearing at 6:07. And we will resume the regular board meeting. First is, we need a motion for the board meeting minutes September 5th. Is there a motion? All those in favor? And opposed?
Warrant number 7X, $11,285.42. In general, water, $328.45. Totalling $11,613.87.
So, do you want to just explain what?
Oh, because we didn't have a board meeting, we missed one board meeting. The 7 and X, the Xs are the board meetings, they're the bills that would have been paid during that board meeting. Correct, though?
Right, there are bills that were allowed to pay for the board meeting. Especially for National Grid and healthcare and hospitalization, all that. We're allowed to pay that ahead of the board meeting. Just so we don't get any more late charges.
Warrant 7XX, general, $36,812.13. Water, $4,092.33. Totalling $40,904.46. There is no warrant eight because it was canceled due to the night conference. Warrant number nine, general, $88,475.24. Water, $26,863.83. Totalling $284,627.82. Payroll number eight, $192.49. Payroll number nine, $119,683.59.
Could you look it over, it's at 21?
It's not, you have it right for me. It's in there.
Oh, sorry. I'm looking at the raw thing.
That's all your warrants and...
You've got some transfer. Hold on, let's do those first. Okay. Do the warrants first. Do you have a motion?
I motion.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Transfer. Transfer from the general fund, the contingent account, $11,500. $1,500 will go to the police uniform allowance. That was the tactical unit needed, the uniforms. They blew, went through that budget, so we'll put a little more in there. $2,500 to street, part-time and summer help. We hired more summer help than we had planned when I was doing the budget last March, in April. The year before, we only had one. This year, we had two, I guess. And $2,500 to street for the replacement and removal of trees. That was for the work done in the park. And $2,000 to storm sewers. We had to rebuild a storm sewer catch basin on a ground under, and it went over budget. And $3,000 for compensated absences. We had a couple of guides sell from vacation time, which are allowed to do. And when they sell it, it goes into compensated absences. And then personal services and the youth. I didn't put enough in the budget. Sorry, $1,300.
That's for what?
The personal services and the youth. I didn't include some of them. And then in the water fund, $20,000 from the contingent account to the maintenance of controls. Back in August of '22, the board agreed to upgrade the SCADA system. I took over a year again, so. And then I just got the bill, so. There wasn't enough in the budget because I figured it was going to be paid later.
And that's it, $20,000? That's all now up and running? Yep. Shaded?
I believe it is, yes. I know there was a couple tweaks there at the due room, but as far as I know, it's all right.
That's the system that controls, they can remotely control the water levels.
Got it.
So, we need a motion for those transfers.
Take a motion?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Next in the agenda is the agreement for the police department to have access to the cameras at the school.
So, do you want to just go over what that is?
Let Kevin explain it. Yeah, absolutely. It's just a, it's an agreement that basically the footage or anything that's observed on that camera during the school day is property of the school, and that can't be used in criminal matters without the explicit consent of the school. It's just basically just allowing the community resource officer in the school there to have access to what's going on at the school, not be able to view it.
Who is the gatekeeper of when that footage can be viewed?
If he has access to it, then he'll be able to have, he'll be able to view it at all times. But it would currently, it would be just through the school.
So, it's school-owned cameras that we're, we're doing an agreement that the resource officer can have access?
So, it's basically just an agreement that the school has the cameras, and the school houses all that. And giving the school resource officer or the community resource officer permission to look at it only for his duties as a, as a school. And then anything beyond that would have to be, could consent from the school. And this is just an agreement that we abide by that.
And we need approval of it, and we have to have approval for the mayor to sign the contract.
Okay, so, say that again.
We need approval for the, enter into the agreement. It can be one motion.
I just, so was this agreement based on, like, another US full agreement that another?
Yeah, this is common practice.
It's a standard?
Yeah, it's just a common practice because of the protections of the...
So, this protects us as well as them?
I don't know necessarily that it protects us, it limits our ability.
It limits us.
Yeah, so that we wouldn't have the camera access for, you know, for anything else without it. I don't really necessarily see a time that they wouldn't give us consent. In other words, you know, if somebody, let's say, snatched the windows out of the school, we wouldn't have direct access without asking for it. In other words, we couldn't just go get the footage without asking for it.
But yeah, but you wouldn't imagine they would deny. Okay, all right.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Second that motion? All those in favor? All right. Anyone opposed? Now, we need what?
That's all. That's all the same.
Safety resource officer.
Um, Bill?
Just to update the board on where we stand right now with the budget and the top six. We're a third of the year through the budget, four months I've been working on it. In the general fund, the expenditures and the revenues are approximately one-third of the budget. So far, we're right on track.
Guys, thank you.
Water fund expenditures are only 43% of the budget currently, but we got a big bill coming for Troy when the next water meter starts. Revenues are about a third. In the sewer, they're both about a third, expenditures and revenues. Next meeting, the auditors will be here. The audit is done. They'll do the presentation to the board. You need to approve a couple of resolutions. They'll do the court and the village.
Can they?
Everything looks good.
Can they give us that report in advance for the meeting?
Oh, yeah, we'll get it. I'll get it ahead of time, and we'll get it out to you guys so you can look at it. If you have any questions, I'll quickly answer them. And just to let everybody know, the state changed all the reports, or one of the reports. I filed it today, so they got their reports. Other than that, everything looks good in the community office.
I have one, just one question, and I'm sure there's a, the one item that seems to run through the whole thing that the expenditures are pretty down at like 10%, 12% is the insurance. Do you pay those ahead of schedule?
Yes, I pay them once a year, a large portion of them in the beginning of the year because that's when we get the bill for the beginning of the fiscal year. So, I pay the liabilities, the, uh... Stuff for the trucks, insurance for trucks, all that.
Okay, so that's done at the front end of the year?
Right, that's done at the front.
All right, I thought, I figured that's what we did.
And then during the year, we might get a couple, like, cybersecurity. I just got that bill on my desk in the morning. That's going to be $4,300, but that's already in the budget. I put them in the budget, I just pay them ahead of time. And if you notice, in June, June or July, after I pay them, then I have to move money back and forth because I don't, normally, I don't have time to break it down. I had it broken down in the budget, but when I get the bill, I have to wait till I get something that tells me what each one of them is worth. And then I'll move money around.
Okay. No, that's fine, I just, I just...
Yeah, yeah, the insurance is paid ahead of time.
Okay. Can you talk about the grocery receipts check?
Ah, the grocery receipts check. We just received our first check for grocery receipts from National Grid. Have not gotten one yet from Spectrum, but we'll see when we get that one. But the check was just under, just over $6,800, and it was for a quarter, so. That's money we never got before. An extra income to the village.
And that's from that change we made?
Yes, that's true. And, you know, picking up that 1%, so. I'm hoping it'll be around $30,000 or $40,000. You know, I mean, I haven't seen anything from Spectrum, but I did get a letter from MCI. They have nobody in this area, so they didn't send us any money, but... And I haven't heard anything from the phone companies. We'll see about that.
Okay.
Matt asked if we could change move number eight up to now.
All right, so Matt, take it away regarding 112, 114 Woods Lane.
Okay. So, the applicant, Mr. Mall, at 1114 Woods Lane is seeking a boundary line adjustment. He owns both parcels. Essentially, he's looking to increase the acreage on the lot that he has his home, decrease the acreage on the other lot. Presumably, he may be selling that, if that's relevant. The resulting acreages will still be within the minimum requirement, required acreage for the zoning districts, and won't create any other inconsistencies, such as, you know, setback issues or anything like that. So, it's still, his existing structure and the bulk lots will still be consistent with the bulk standards for the code meeting. Approvable from that perspective. So, this is something that's on our list. We need to amend the village's subdivision law because it doesn't have a specific requirement for texting there related to boundary line adjustments. It does give the village board the authority to waive the minor subdivision approval, in which case this is what we're recommending, and that you just issue him a boundary line adjustment. I provided, I don't know, two documents. One is a staff report, which we're going to be doing for all projects going forward when a project is before the board for decision. So, it'll lay out the project, what's been received, our analysis and recommendation. And then also provided is a notice of decision, which again will be used for all projects going forward. Lays out similar background information, but that becomes the formal document in which the decision is syndicated along with conditions. So, for the sake of Woods Lane, it just identified the fact that we recommend a boundary line adjustment, and that the village board can approve that. Seeker's not applicable, doesn't need to go to the county. And so, I can answer any questions if you have.
Okay, I have the, so essentially, it's two lots now.
No, it's one lot.
It's one lot?
It's one lot they want to make into the...
It says originally...
No, it's actually two lots.
So, it's two lots, yeah.
So, this is existing.
This is existing, so where it is moving?
So, this is an existing lot right here. So, he just wants to set one...
You know the piece that, you know the piece that abugs Ballmer?
Yes.
That piece will remain with the current house. So, only the piece that has entry off of Woods Lane will remain in the separate lot.
Okay.
His house will absorb all that green grass. Where the lights are, the evidence, all of that. And keep that with the house. And then a lot shrinks from 5.2 acres to 2.2 acres.
So, remain, access that final.
Okay, that's that final lot on the year. And that's the current access right there.
Yeah. Any other questions?
We also... Received all the, the check for...
Yeah, we did. I told them that, yeah. Yeah, but there is the SRO, yeah, so. And I had a conversation, yeah, no, yeah, and I reached out to the applicant, and he's aware of it. Because we just had a conversation that, you know, the village shouldn't incur, even for these minor, minor little projects, you're not going to incur the review cost. So, even if it's something as simple, again, like this is dependent upon the full board. But we did request an SRO 500 to pay for our review. And I think that's totally reasonable for these smaller projects.
So, what we actually need this evening is a, is a motion to waive the site plan requirement, or...
Basically, it's inferred in the decision if you just approve the boundary line adjustment as proposed. Laid out in here that part of that decision is waiving the...
Well, since it's not a subdivision?
Right, you're wa, you're making the point that it's not a subdivision, that you're waiving the need to process.
Simply by motioning and approving?
Yeah. And you approve the boundary line adjustment. The applicant has this signed piece of paper, he can then take that, file it with the county, and it's updated.
I will make the motion to accept the recommendation to move the boundary line adjustment for 114, 112 Woods Lane.
So then, just, sorry for the question, if he did want to build on the second piece, then they would have to come back to us?
He would, to just build a single-family dwelling, he would just need a building permit from the county.
But the piece that's now joining his current house would not be a separate parcel, so...
Yep, okay. I'll second.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you, Matt.
So, also, one last thing is, all of our project review letters, like for the ones that say one ounce for Daughters Charity, we copied the full board on it. And we'll, we can discuss if we want to provide to Google Drive where all the application materials are stored. And I think I did share that with everybody, but I want to circle back. What I'm trying to do is create a very transparent process that you guys know. As we get more and more projects, we're anticipating bigger ones coming down the road. You can be able to quickly go and see what's going on, review. You'll get all our response letters, you'll get the information from the applicants, they'll all be in the Google Drive, and that you stay on top of things as we move forward. And then the approvals too, that's why, you know, we get, we get updated application materials on the 9th. Hoping that we can prove it on the 16th. We still, we have internal work to do, but also we need to send you guys our recommendation. You guys need to consider it, so it can't be like the night of the meeting that you guys are absorbing all that information to help you make a decision. My goal is to make sure that you can get all this stuff well in advance, and that it's, that there's not questions that could already be answered going forward, right? Thank you, Matt. Thank you.
Don, what's next?
The appointment.
So, pursuant to Village Law Section 4-400, I am appointing Deputy Mayor Seth Harris to continue in that position in the place of myself, in the event so is needed.
He fills in for you and getting signed checks, everything for you.
Seth is at parent-teacher conference tonight, right?
Yes.
I am nominating Don Handerhan as village clerk to run a four-year term concurrent with myself ending July 6, 2027. Am I ready to approve that?
A motion?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? I am appointing Nicole Lott as deputy clerk treasurer for the next year.
A motion?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I am appointing Bill Smith as treasurer for the Village of Nance for the next year.
A motion?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I am appointing Chris Flint as the appeals officer for field Freedom of Information Act requests.
May I motion?
Thank you.
A second.
All right, that's, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I am appointing Kevin Franklin as a historian for the Village of Nance for the next year.
May I motion?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I am appointing Don Handerhan as the registrar and reappointing Cheryl Lyon as the deputy registrar for vital statistics for the Village of Nance for the pursuing year.
May I motion?
A second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I am appointing Cheryl Lyon to the position of special assistant to the mayor for the pursuing for the next year. She will receive a stipend of $2,500 for that position. In the past, there has been an assistant to the mayor. I'm not necessarily in favor of that, but having someone who is the official keeper of emails, calendar, and so on, so that it helps me in scheduling and other things. so that it helps me in scheduling and other things within the village office. Cheryl has agreed to step into that role and basically be my coordination point in the village office.
Do you need a motion?
Thank you.
I'll second.
Alright, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I am promoting and appointing David Ogden to the position of water operations manager.
I have motion?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I am also promoting and appointing Calvin Schoonmaker as sub-formant for the Department of Public Works.
Big motion?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Kevin? Police officer.
Alright, so, we have a retirement coming up. Scott Westwell put in for his retirement and, and with anticipation of that. We're preparing for that opening. We're looking to hire Joseph Murray, who comes from Catskill Police Department. He has probably about three years' experience, and we're looking to see if he can start October 12th. Put us in time to have him train for Scott.
We met with him, he's a, a really, seems like he's gonna be a good officer. He has a significant other who's
In the area.
In the area, and a teacher?
Yes.
And so, he, he seems like a good fit. And so, I would like to nominate him for the officer role, starting at step two.
Two.
And so I'm looking for a motion to, he will come here on the sixteenth for an introduction?
Correct.
Okay.
Make a motion to hire Joseph Murray?
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We've had a difficulty attracting talent for the midnight dispatch shift at the village. We've had just some difficulty. It's a tough shift to fill, I think is an understatement. Kevin and Ryan have actually filled in for shifts when we couldn't find anybody. I reached out to the town of Colony and asked them to take over the midnight shift. And after significant discussion, they basically declined. Very disappointing, I have to say. So, we're looking at other options, and we'll update the board in the future on that.
You wanna talk about the part-time pay now?
Sure. In reviewing our contract for police, part-time officers are paid significantly less than full-time officers.
Absolutely.
And so, in order to help reduce overtime, one of the things that we've discussed and I'm proposing is to make part-time pay start at the lowest salary of a full-time officer. The difference in pay between what this would be and overtime is significant, basically fifty percent. So, attracting new part-time help will reduce our overtime budget significantly. So basically, I believe the number is roughly twenty-seven. Do you have that there?
Twenty-seven fifty-eight. Would it be able to go up to twenty-seven fifty-eight? Currently twenty-four seventy-four, which is two dollars and eighty-four cents.
So if we cover more shifts with part-time help, then it reduces the amount of overtime that, that we, the overtime rate that we pay.
Yeah, part-time will work in lieu of overtime, so it's a, it's a cost saving.
So the. That doesn't seem to be a significant increase.
It's still that the, it's the starting pay, it's, it's competitive, it's starting to be a little bit more competitive. Currently, part-time employment and other agencies around us are, are still more, but this would, this is still the beginning of our steps for the full-time officer. So, instead of pushing them higher than a full-time officer, it would start at that level.
Currently, overtime, do all officers make the same amount of money overtime, or you get overtime based on what you currently make?
Currently, at your.
So we're spending a lot of money, Kevin, in overtime to work the shifts.
They, they don't get paid overtime.
No, you don't get paid overtime.
He just takes another day off or whatever.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
Can we have a motion to increase the salary for part-time officers as proposed?
Make a motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Is it twenty-seven?
So, I'd like to, can we, can we make, is the board in agreement to make it, make, so that we don't have to keep adjusting it? Can we just make it the rate of the, whatever the first, so next year when the rate goes up for the first-time officer?
Yeah, so we're looking, that's what the rate would be this year, we're looking to have it to, the part-time officer makes
To.
Step one rate, police officer.
Are we in agreement with that?
With the curse.
I want you to just make, make another motion to say that, that the part-time rate will be at the rate of the step one police officer.
Which is twenty-seven fifty-eight.
This year is.
But then next year, we don't have to go through this.
So next year it'll increase by, what, three percent?
Okay, so I'll, I'll, so I wanna amend the motion to increase the pay to the, the rate pay of the starting police officer. It could be adjusted in there.
Yeah.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We had two vehicles that are on Washington International. One was the 2011 dump truck, and the other one was the 2016 Ford Expedition for the police, for the fire department. The, the bids, the final bids came in for the 2011 dump truck is $6,600, and the Ford Expedition is $12,800. I talked to Mike and Brian and everybody, and they all agreed that, because it needs to have the whole motor replaced, and so he, they were okay with accepting the six hundred, the $6,600.
The truck company, I think, wanted to give us $2,500.
Yeah, $2,500 for.
Okay. The other one is much lower than we were hoping to have.
Yeah, well, that, that, we'll discuss that in a second, I was gonna get that one, but I need approval for the, to accept that.
We accept the bid, we need a motion for accepting the bid of $6,600 for all Washington International.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Washington International does not allow you to put a, what do you call, reserve, reserve amount, so you have to go by, you know, whatever the bid is. But if you, we could decline the bid and make a counter offer. They'll talk to David, he wants to make the counter offer twenty-two-five, and then if they don't accept it, then we'll just go, we'll have to rebid it.
Yeah, that's what I had, is that's what he was hoping to sell it at, was twenty-two-five.
So, I need a, a motion to
A little bit.
I need a motion not to approve the bid, but to allow the counter offer.
Now, the private ones come in by October 11th.
Yeah, and we haven't received any yet. But if, if we, if we, if they do come back with the twenty-two-five, I want permission for me to accept it, so then, because I can't wait out another board meeting before we can do it.
But that's what he was hoping to get. And I don't know that we would get more. Do you think we would get more in private? I mean, he said that was what he was like, his goal number. So I would say I'll make a motion to not approve the bid for the 2016 Ford Expedition at $12,800, and the counter offer at $22,500, and if the counter offer met through for the clerk to complete the sale.
A second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Zero.
Okay, couple of updates. The police department garage doors are in, they're working well. The main valve work at the Skyler Flats to isolate the water supply from Troy is scheduled mid-October.
Yeah, mid-October.
Mid-October. We are looking at installing an alarm system for 280 Broadway.
It's gonna be installed on Thursday.
Okay. I think the cost is less than a thousand dollars in goods. Some panic, panic dogs in case something was to happen. High reservoir service, the valve was cut out by the diver, and the chamber has now emptied. And by looking at the area around the tank this morning, it has dried up significantly. So hopefully that was the fix we've been waiting for. Now they're gonna start working on the interior of the tank and sealing it up. And, and hopefully that takes care of that issue, which has been three, four years now, we've been working on that. There is some tree work that's needed at the high reservoir service to make sure that once we get the tank working properly and perfectly, that they don't crash into the tank and damage it. We have one quote, and we're looking to get more, but nobody's getting back to us. So we'll revisit that in the next meeting. In the next month, I'd like to have some updates to the Nance sign laws. So if somebody wants to work on me, work with me on that, that particular project, that'd be great. There's a couple of things I'd like to mention. First, there's a rumor going around that migrants are replacing some of the residents at the Skyler Inn. That is absolutely positively false. So, please be careful with any of that type of rumor. It is absolutely correct, or absolutely incorrect, that there's no migrants being bused to the Skyler Inn. There's a new energy benchmarking report that will help with some of the goals and energy initiatives that we're doing here at the village that is posted on the website, right? Is that correct? Okay. Let's see. Paul, you wanna talk about that? Fall festival?
Actually.
Go for it. The fall festival is, is to showcase some of the vendors at the Nance market. There's gonna be some fun kit stuff, and some, there's flyers on the, on the podium over there. And then there's trunk or treat.
And then there's also, there's also gonna be a band there playing.
A band, Kane the Rooster.
Kane the Rooster.
Which was really popular at concerts, or the Foo Truck.
Foo Truck.
Foo Truck.
Did they get a play with Speed?
No. I like that.
Was there any music involved when he played with Speed?
He was awesome. I don't remember who he was, I don't remember the name.
We're gonna do the menorah lighting for the village on December 12th here in the fire hall instead of outside, so that nobody slips and falls and kills themselves. We will be updating the village webpage to manansny.gov. That will be the new URL for the village in the beginning of the year. The village website is going to be going to a new format, based on some code that we basically are going to copy from the city water fleet. They were very generous in helping us with some of their code, which is a really great website. So we're gonna emulate that, that layout. Let's see, what else? I have
Trunk or treat, trunk or treat is gonna be, it's gonna be
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine?
Yeah. And the twenty-eighth will be the trunk or treat in the cemetery. That was popular last year. For those, Manan Road paving project is gonna start this Friday. They're gonna start milling. I am going to meet with the D E guys, Mike Higman, tomorrow to walk through the project and confirm what we believe is going to be the scope of the project is actually the scope of the project. And then it will actually start being paved on Monday. So another flyer will go out on Wednesday to the residents, and also will hopefully still have some no-tire game signs as well. I have also addressed the trailer that's parked on Manan Road, for those of you who are Manan Road residents here.
It's totally silent.
Uh, the lady talks, the fire auxiliary will have our life members brunch next Saturday, the fourteenth. And we're celebrating sixty years.
Don, should I talk about this court, J-CAP?
Yeah, yes.
You wanna explain that?
The court is, is gonna be applying for J-CAP money to do some renovations in the court. They did the hallway this year, but they, we had to put it in now for next year, and we're gonna be doing, Susan wants to refurbish the bathrooms. The women's room, that, that's this time of the night, which is definitely needed. So, we need approval for, or a motion to approve that we apply for it and that the mayor can sign the form.
Does this go through all support ministries?
Yes, that's okay.
I'll make a motion that the mayor signs the application for J-CAP funding.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, a couple, couple other updates I wanted to get to. Stevie submitted some questions. So, here we go. The Verizon Tower is operational. Why it hasn't provided the additional benefits of service that I think we were all hoping for is a call that Don and I are working on. They're also allowing our police to install, I think it's called a repeater of some kind.
Some type of antenna on the tower.
So that our signals from all of our cameras all down Broadway will be better received. And I think that's for free.
That is for free.
Regeneron, if you saw the news today, it was announced.
I didn't, I didn't see anything on the news because I was busy.
They purchased the building at 431 Broadway, and we look forward to working with them.
They happened to buy that, like, car place too? Because they seem to have emptied out, so I didn't know if that sold.
From the other side of the transportation center?
That was, I think, the pseudo, the owner got rid of them. So, unrelated though.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Yep, unrelated, just coincidence.
Okay.
Who knows in the future?
Yeah.
So the green initiatives, I'm not really sure what exactly, which ones you mean, yet?
I was just talking like the LED lighting, how you're calculating the savings on that, so that it would reflect savings to the residents.
So the way that National Good Bills are accounted is an average of usage. Equals the amount of power that we use. So now, instead of three hundred watts, it's ninety-six watts, so that will be reflected in the number that they produce.
And you're gonna kind of track that and kind of share.
So Tara Denadio, who helped us get our CDR, what's it now, Capital Region, what's that, what's that?
Capital Region.
Capital Region, oh, Capital Region Transportation Council.
Yes, whatever, it changed its name.
Yeah.
She is the one who's helping us with those benchmarking things. She helped us produce the benchmarking report, and she's helping us calculate all of that stuff so that we can get green initiative points from NYSERCA and be able to do free stuff, energy related.
Glad to hear that it's being tracked, because I was curious if some of those savings would help taxpayers.
Yep. So, no, not every light is metered, it's based on the calculator, usage. You heard on Manan Road?
Yeah, I didn't know if that was, I got the flyer today, so that question was before I got the flyer.
Don and I, Don and I set up, called to set up a meeting to pre-construction, and
He told, he, he called, he says, yeah, oh, we're gonna start milling on Wednesday. And I said, no, you're not.
Well, I'm glad that you're also gonna kind of make sure that the specs are, are they doing, you know, because I didn't know who was gonna monitor that. At least having Mike involved, you know, I'm just, it never affected me, but some of my, you know, fellow residents of that street have had issues with their driveway with a huge humps.
Believe me, if I break, if I break.
That's telling from the last painting job, I recall that.
Yeah, it was a mess.
Yeah, they, they didn't do a great job on the winging at the driveway, because it's, yeah.
If I break on the sidewalk, those cars, I mean, I might have to pull back forward and then go, because.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, that, that did, that did come up at the last time this was done, years ago, yeah.
So.
Uh, so you had asked about trees and brushes. Your best bet is to report it to Don.
Okay, I was curious because, you know, sometimes when I was walking end of Manan Road, there's a tree that's blocking the signs and there's a brush that blocks half the sidewalk, so those are just two examples.
The village has the right to cut anything that's a safety hazard or in the right of way.
And the reason why it made me think about that tree was because an eighteen where there went up and the driver looked like, where the hell am I going? But I was thinking, I was going to say, like, where the hell are you going? There's three signs. I don't know how he gets to see one of them.
Uh, you asked about switching the website and, and emails to dot gov. Uh, so the content, the content will be moved for the websites and yes, all of the emails will be archived.
I assume, but I just wanted to ask.
Uh, four forty-four Broadway, um, is currently being worked on.
Okay.
Um, and they should be renovating since they sold the wall greaves.
Yes, the wall greaves were sold on last Wednesday, last week.
Yeah, I was just curious because I remember, I don't even remember how long ago it was, but I remember the meeting where they showed kind of pictures of what they imagined it was gonna look like. And it's nothing like, obviously, it wasn't.
I can assure you, I can assure you that, that, that every time we speak to the owners, that gets brought up. And they just said, we ran out of money, we ran out of money. But now, now that they have money, it should be good.
And so the sale of the old ridehead, was that to the other cannabis person?
Yes.
Because that's what originally they split it off to sell it to somebody for their cannabis. They're just left to?
They still have to go through the full process. Uh, a cannabis dispensary company now owns the building. Uh, that is true.
Okay.
They have not yet applied and not yet received.
They haven't applied for license, which means that's all on hold right now with the state.
Correct.
So they're really behind the eight ball there. That's okay.
And that's a risk they take.
No, I got you. I just didn't know if it was still that or if it was no longer that because we have the other one.
So the law says that they must be two thousand feet apart and it's something like three thousand feet apart. Uh, so that's that question. Cranes will block, uh, agreed. Uh, it's for sale. Do you know anyone?
I just didn't know, because I know that, that the board went after them before and they did some of the cleanup, but-
So the order was to demolish the building? Anything other than that? Is-
I just, because, yeah, I mean, you also had that rule, was it one twenty-seven or something about properties? And, and businesses having to keep up their property to a certain aspect of code. So I didn't know if we could implement that and tell them the lot needs to be actually cleared of the debris that's-
So when we broached that subject with them before, their argument was, we're a concrete business and everything that's there is concrete.
But you're no longer a concrete business. They're gonna be locked.
Agreed.
Yeah.
So hopefully it sells and someone redevelops. Uh, so that, that was your, your question. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Molly, the trailer will be, will be moved by morning.
Um.
With a ticket on it? With a ticket on it?
Yes.
Is that it?
Anybody else, you have to press the board. Anybody else have anything?
Anyone else from the board?
Uh, did you want to talk about this?
Yes. Okay.
So, uh, there was a meeting, uh, Brian and the, and the chiefs, uh, and myself to discuss, uh, um, another evacuation, um, drill for, uh, everybody who lives on the west side of the railroad tracks. Uh, one was conducted in twenty fourteen and a letter was sent out to the residents to, you know, notify them when the drill was going to take place in, in order for, for emergency services, not only to practice the actions they would need to take in the event of a, a train accident, but how the residents would leave, would exit off, off the area. Uh, so a plan was discussed and developed. Uh, we're preparing a, a notice to the, to the residents. Uh, should, do we, we say, state the date yet or? Okay, yeah, November, we're looking at November fifth, Sunday, November fifth. And, uh, it's, it, it'll be, you know, explanatory of, of the actions that'll take place. And this will help the village, as part of the village's emergency action plan. And, uh, this is, you know, it's been requested and, uh-
It has been, not just for train accidents, but it's when they block roads.
Well. When, it'll work the same way. Yes, you're, you're correct.
I think that, like, I mean, I technically live below the tracks, but like if I was at the park and it were to happen, so I don't think we should limit this invite to just those who live over the tracks.
Uh, well, some mandatory, you can't-
No, 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 yes, but I'm just saying, making sure we advertise it to, you know, anyone.
Well, it'll be on the website, but without the, it'll be on Facebook.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
They, they, they just won't anticipate because they won't be going.
Well, they're at the park. If I was at the park, if I was, so, yeah.
Yeah, that's correct.
Oh, if it happened and-
But you'll, but you'd still be here.
Part of the evacuation.
Yes.
Yes.
Got it.
So if you, if you happen to be at the park at the time of the, of the drill?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
The, the, the fire department and the police department will ask, ask you to leave.
Yeah. Probably.
Uh.
Can I ask a question or get a comment or not? Should I wait?
About this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, one thing, now, as far as the school goes, uh, there is a intermunicipal agreement with the school. That's, that's by my understanding still in place. But I do have a question for you is, uh, do you necessitate that, uh, you know, I know you have a board meeting on October tenth, uh, discussion with, with the, with the school board or just the superintendent?
Yeah, so, yeah, on that point, right, the school should be involved in whatever activity you're maintaining or send out. My, my comment was though, honestly, everyone in the village should. People from all over the village go to the park and if a train happened to, if somewhere, people kind of need to know.
If they're, if they're gonna be, they're there.
I'm just saying information, don't just share it with
Yes.
that's the west side of those residents on the, on the park. It should be shared with everybody because if you happen to be at the park, it's an accident. It's like, oh yeah, I remember I'm supposed to do this. At least they'll look at the plan.
Yes.
But as far as the school goes, most definitely reach out to the district and find out. I know we have a, an emergency plan. I have not read it as a board member because it's, it's security, right, for the district, the, the school handles that. But we should make sure the district is knowledgeable of the day that this is happening to have their representation there. I'm saying superintendent, right? The principal, it's not necessarily the board.
Put yourself out there.
Yeah, superintendent, obviously, but I, I mean, you know, there is an intermunicipal agreement for the ingress egress.
Yep.
You know, through the school path, so.
But these emergency things should involve-
It was definitely perceived that, that, you know, the school, the district involves.
So our next meeting on this, Kevin, when, when's our follow-up?
Uh, I don't have a, I believe it's, I believe it's next week. I'm not sure.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. You ready? I got a couple of things. Um, just so everybody's aware, October fourth, there's gonna be a nationwide test of the emergency alert system. Similar to what the Amber Alert's been getting all weekend. Um, the street light project is complete. Um, National Grid's gonna be replacing gas lines on North Pearl prior to us doing the, the infrastructure work. Um, if anybody sees any potholes, I know, I got some of them that we, we reported in the morning, but if anybody sees any pothole, please let me know. Um, the, the tree removal at the park, the, the trees that, that had to be removed are complete, but in the spring, they're, we're gonna be replacing some of those trees. Um, Molly talked about Manan Road. Um, just so everybody's aware, uh, we got a loyalty check of fourteen hundred dollars from our workers' comp people. So that's all I got.
Okay. Uh, next we're gonna do public comment. As everyone has read, public comment is, uh, up to three minutes. Please state your name and your address for the record so that it's recorded in the minutes. Uh, anyone can submit statements of any length to the board ahead of the meeting to be included with the board package. Uh, so who's up? Go ahead, Don.
I'm Bill Garvey. I live in five eighty-seven Broadway here in Manans. Couple things. I know I got plenty on it, but I'll only read a few of them. I'm impressed with the south side of the restroom building next to Pavilion Building. Had been painted artistically, something to do with the mural. As a reminder, that it was very creative and it's, they've done a very good job. However, I would have preferred that they had painted it green, you know, my favorite color. Because that's the official color for Manans flag. Now, Mrs. Price and Chuck Price, you know, their dog, Juno, wanted it green, as did Karen Stewart's two dogs. They wanted it painted green.
Talk about something else.
I'm just saying, that's what I'm just saying.
Okay.
I would, that's, that's what I wanted, paint it green, not blue, but I'll accept it the way it is without any complaint. And I'd like to propose replacement of current wooden guide rails, new wooden guide rails at Switzer Pope Park. Like it's already been dealt with, yes, Smith Park a few years ago during twenty twenty-four, under the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Manans Village budget. I also forgot to mention, I'd like to see the wooden guide rails on two hundred and fifty Broadway building property replaced, and I'd like to see them painted Lincoln Green.
We're working on that as a larger project.
Yeah, having, I like to have primed and painted Lincoln Green. Now, I'm, I'm very glad to hear that, that the plants, weeds and brush have been removed from that one sign whistle post along the D and H rail tracks just south of Manan Road. However, I have a couple of, just before I came here, I got complaint from one of the village residents. Now, since they're dredging that drainage, drainage area south of the Manan Road railway crossing, I've been told they put gravel and then someone broke a glass in there. And I'm not too, and I'm concerned about it. And I've been, and I've been told that the maintenance guys can't get it done because they got police to look at it. I'm not too happy about that, but as soon as we get this project done, the better. And I'd like to thank all of you, particularly you, Brian Marsh. Remember I wrote you a letter to recommend that Don hand and get reappointed as clerk? Well, I'm glad you've done it and I'm happy about it. And Don, I hope you appreciate my recommendation.
Thanks, Paul.
That's all I got to say. Thank you. Let me speak.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
Do we have an estimated completion date for this?
No, I'll, I'll call Monday. I'll call her.
Dragging on. Yeah.
Uh, if I could just interrupt this, just breaking news, the nine-year-old girl was found.
Oh, really?
Oh, good.
Wow. He's found alive and somebody's in custody.
Oh, that's great.
I thought everybody would like to do that.
Well, I'm glad to hear. I had the feeling she was gonna be found sleeping alive, thank God.
Thank you.
Can you please read my report? Uh, back in, I asked the village to put their financial reports on the website. Uh, I know, Brian, you said you're converting to a new computer, a new accounting system. My concern is that the bill is recording the financial data off your current system, so I don't see why you can't put it out there.
So.
And July, August, September. Uh, I just don't understand if he's using it to report to the board why it can't be sent out.
So we today, just in our board packet, got a report that is now gonna be posted with the minutes as a record of what we, the same thing that we got today is gonna be in the minutes. So that will, that will be going forward. You'll know this. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Okay, uh, before I get into it, I have a suggestion on these asset sales. Are they being put on the website and in Manans Minutes?
Say that again.
The asset sales, your truck sales, uh-
Yes.
They're on, yeah, they're on.
Auctions International and-
Well, I'm just saying on the Manans website and also in the Manans Minutes. So you have whatever, four thousand citizens, somebody might be interested in one of those vehicles.
So the police, wasn't the police-
So the fire truck has been on Facebook, um, and a couple other websites, um, outside of the auction, the dump truck, I'm not sure.
Well, I'm just thinking, you know, maybe somebody in the community would be interested, whatever, it's just a thought. Okay, the main reason I wanted to speak tonight was on a topic that we're all familiar with. Something that will change the face of the village if we don't get our arms around it real, real soon. We've been fortunate in as much as Fusion has been dragging their feet or having difficulties getting up and running, apparently, I don't see a lot of activity over there now. Which maybe has bought us some time, maybe it hasn't, I don't know. But my name's Chuck Price, I live at two North Lions in Manans. And, uh, really, I'm here to offer some actionable solutions outside of my zoning appeal, which was denied. So the core problem that we have here is some non-conforming, uh, operations. So local zoning code one sixty-nine ten prohibits business and professional offices from offering onsite patient care. And that's exactly what the certificate of occupancy is for, uh, Fusion at this time, or actually, uh, NICO. So the proposed OTP has been granted that and, uh, it would be in violation of the law if that facility is established there. Uh, secondly, according to Manan zoning, a medical facility should include services like laboratories, outpatient departments and staff offices. And the proposed, proposed OTP doesn't align with that description. Uh, it's probably primarily a methadone dispensing center becomes an OTP. And interestingly, the ordinance explicitly states that an urgent care facility can't be considered a business and professional office, setting a precedent that not all medical facilities automatically fit into the business and professional office category. So my proposed actionable solution is this, look, things, things change all the time. There's evolution of, of all sorts of things. So what I think, what I think should be considered is this, initiate a formal zoning reevaluation. Given the zoning laws are continually evolving, a comprehensive review of the proposed OTP facility is essential. Unique services offered by OTP this reexamination to ensure alignment current zoning categories and conduct a local zoning compliance review. Simultaneously, I urge the board rigorously assess the OTP's compliance from Manans local zoning definitions. Because I think I've made a pretty good case that they fall outside of those definitions. And that should encompass a thorough review of all operational aspects with staffing to the services offered. So, given the urgent zoning inconsistencies and the immediate risks to the community, uh, I urge the board to pass a formal resolution tonight to initiate a comprehensive zoning review and reevaluation of the proposed OTP facility and to conduct an immediate compliant audit of the OTP's operations. Both tasks are time-sensitive and should be completed soon. Uh, the safety of our residents is at stake and, and immediately, or immediate and decisive action would be warranted, in my view.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Cindy Price. I live at two North Lions Avenue. Um, in the past, our village attorney has suggested that we revisit the zoning, but he worries that it could open up lawsuits in the short term. He also said that if we disagree with the building department, we, the residents, should file an article seventy-eight. I want to address both of these points. On the potential lawsuit, our zoning laws exist to protect the community. Ignoring violations doesn't reduce this risk, it increases it. However, it's important to weigh the potential risks of litigation against the potential risks of allowing a facility to operate. And allowing something that is breaking the zoning laws would be reckless. It could even make us vulnerable for some legal challenges down the road. As for the seven, uh, article seventy-eight part, the board was elected to do what's best for the community. Telling the residents to sue the government to uphold the law seems counterproductive. And it's like you're dodging your responsibilities. It also erodes the trust between the village and its residents and you guys. It's really not the kind of government that we should want. The bottom line is your main role is to do right by the community. If you compromise on zoning laws, you're not only risking a legal issue, you're failing in your ethical responsibilities. Given the immediate safety concerns, I strongly recommend that you pass a formal resolution tonight. Let's not force the residents to take legal action against the home governments. That's where I stand and I'm looking forward to the board's, uh, decision tonight. Thanks for hearing me out.
Thank you, Cindy. Will you both send those, uh, to Don for inclusion on the record? Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead, Laura.
Go ahead, Bill.
Laura. Go ahead. You guys quiet it down. Go ahead.
I'm Laura Harper from Little Road and, um, I guess it's just, um, we understand that a facility falls under the category of what we should be permitted for. I guess it's just, um, we understand that a facility falls under the category of what we should be permitted for. I think everyone understands that. My question is, does anyone have any knowledge? Do you have, is that same permit also going to stand if they are able to get their OTP permit?
This is, this is public comment, you're able to make any public comments, this is not a question and answer period.
Well, then I make the comment that I, I urge the board to listen to the crisis testimonies regarding the position of how residents feel about if that facility is going to become outpatient treatment. Eight minutes.
Thank you.
My name is Bill Nevins, I live on Wolford Avenue. Everything that has been said currently about the Fusion Center is true. And you all know it, I know you're advised by council not to say anything. There was, uh, letters came from Fusion threatening, uh, the board on their action to sue. We shouldn't feel intimidated by businesses. You are the elected officials by the community. And the community has overwhelmingly shown that they don't want this facility here, right? Perhaps, and this is a comment from me, and again, I'm a resident, I'm not speaking on behalf of any of the other positions I hold. I strongly encourage the board members to seek other council advice. Uh, I think Steve's done a great job for the village, he has for years, he offers a lot of good information. Perhaps this instance is a time to seek other counsel and get advice from someone else. Oh, last comment, um, on, on Clifford Road, there's still no speed limit sign. And if you guys are actually moving forward and allowing more, more residents to live there, you should put a speed limit sign on that road.
I know, I dispute that in order, I'm not sure.
I would dispute that. I was involved in putting two signs up.
It's up now, I was there, um.
Two. One on the north side, one on the south side.
I was there Friday afternoon.
Telling you right now.
Okay, sweet, and I'll withdraw that last comment.
Thanks, Bill.
All good, I just, I'm telling you.
It was Friday.
It was there.
It was Friday.
Put them up, they're there.
Anyone else?
We stole them.
Well, Bill's going to get them tonight, there's no other time.
Expect right size, right height, right heavy.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else from the public? Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
I'm Paul Harvey, I live on Brookside, I've been here way too long. But I'm, I'm speaking of speed limits. Uh, I know we have the machine on Brookside, I don't know what the results were on Brookside, but I can tell you they do forty miles an hour going up and down. They don't need to slow down for the tracks today. Someone was, you know, my granddaughter go have the bus in front of our house on the other side of the street and her mother was getting ready to walk across the street with it and the guy came down the street and he, he had to slam on his brakes because they were in the middle of the road. Um, if we can't change the speed limit, can we put speed bumps on these roads? It'll slow them down. I did it once with roofing nails when I lived on Glenwood.
Allegedly.
No, allegedly. I, I'm sure it's passed.
Kevin, can you talk at all about some of the results from some of the side streets?
Unfortunately, I don't have the data from Brookside, I didn't have that with me. But that's something that I could definitely provide, uh, an accurate, uh, you know, depiction of the, the speeds that, that cars that are going up there, the average speed. I just did it for, I brought Ward's Lane with me, I don't.
So can you go over the?
I'm curious about that one.
Can we go over Ward's Lane's results since we, we're on the topic right now?
Yeah, absolutely, so, uh, it sat at Ward's Lane a little bit longer than we typically because the school was going in session, so, typically the analysis was only for a week's timeframe. In the timeframe that it was there, it was, uh, just shy of twenty-four days and it saw a hundred thirty, a hundred, a hundred and thirty thousand cars. In that timeframe, the average speed was twenty-eight miles an hour, the median speed was twenty-nine. Uh, and then they do kind of the eighty-five percentile, you know, and that speed limit, it was thirty-six miles an hour at Ward's Lane. There's obviously a significant amount of traffic during the week and it slows down quite a bit during the weekend. Of that total, you know, the hundred, sorry, a hundred twenty-six thousand, a hundred twenty-nine thousand, a hundred two thousand were on the weekdays and the weekends was twenty, almost twenty-seven thousand. You know, a hundred thousand cars is very few that are going, you know, over forty-five, there's this significant, you know, like I said, the eighty-five percentile is at thirty-six miles an hour and the median speed is twenty. Uh, that, it records both directions. They're sending in, uh, but like I said, this is, uh, you know, roughly twenty pages and it analyzes everything time of day. And then we utilize that information to do our best in, in enforcement for, you know, seeing where the issues are. And, you know, unfortunately, you see some of this traffic is showing, uh, during the school, right? So, or arrival at a special time, so that's something that will be out there trying to combat.
Did you see speeds, uh, above average, above normal speeds during the time when kids would be dismissed?
Uh, the, the significant amount of the speeding seemed to be during that timeframe, but like I said, uh, they, they register a speeding vehicle at thirty-one miles an hour. So, uh, between thirty and thirty-five is, that's the significant portion of the speeding cars. But about half the cars were speeding in overall.
I'd say it's probably worse in the morning than it is in the afternoon. More of it'll drop off as they go.
That's the, uh, the data supports that.
Can you get us the data for Brookside?
Yeah, absolutely, like I said, I apologize, I didn't have, I don't have that data with me, but, um, it, it produces the same thing. It's a twenty-page document like this and goes over different timeframes and hours. But I don't have. It's something I could easily get for you, I just don't have it with me today, I'm sorry.
I gauge it by the tracks.
Yeah.
When I'm sitting on my porch and you hear a car that's coming down and you know it's not speeding, you hear boom, boom, boom. And then the next time it blows, you hear a bump, which means they're not even touching the tracks. They're hitting that first track and they're airborne going over. It, it's dangerous.
It is, then they come down Villa Road and they're up to eighty, by the time they get to me.
I was on my tractor the other day and some guy went, he was in Miami, he had Villa Road on. He was smoking, going downhill.
Anyone else? Okay, well, do we have anything else from the board? Okay, we have, uh, personnel matter and a legal matter for executive session. So can I have, uh, motion to go into executive session? Motion. All those in favor? Any my post? Thank you.
I am aware that.